It is 7:03. I will call to order the March 12th meeting of the Amity City Council. Please rise and join me in sitting in line.
I would like to leave you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you. Counselor, please. Counselor, Melissa, the wordless. Present, Counselor Rachel Wong. Okay, we assume. Counselor Caleb Shields.
Here.
Counselor Ella Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Rachel.
Here.
Let's start this evening with the consent agenda. We have budget versus actuals in minutes from the February work session and goal setting. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Callers in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes, please signify by saying no. Consent agenda passes. We'll move into citizen comments and questions. This is an opportunity to present items not on the regular agenda. Please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. We have the Infoway County Sheriff's Office report in our packet. I don't see our person appear.
We should be able to see it.
The city's going to go on Zoom.
Did he say anything?
No. Uh, no. I think it's moved. I think it's moved. I want to watch it. The city's moved on. I sent it to the city.
Uh, thanks. Um, I will ask, is there anyone in the audience with a citizen comment or question? See? And/or do we have anyone online? Seeing done, we will move into our public hearing. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing regarding the annexation of press file number 2401-01, ANX, to applicant Don Kelly, Kelly and Kelly, at tax lot R5420DB00100, Amity Oregon 97101. This is a quasi-judicial decision. Unlike legislative hearings where personal community may come into play, quasi-judicial rulings may be grounded in relevant code and other approval criteria. If the application meets the code and other approval criteria, the city, the city council of the city, the city council must approve it. The hearing will begin as follows. We will first address preliminary legal matters. Then staff will make a presentation introducing the applicant application that is before us. Then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their application. Then members of the audience will be given the opportunity to speak. Then we will review any written commentary presented by the public to city hall. Finally, there will be time for rebuttal by the applicant. If you would like to speak regarding this application and your current person, please complete the public testimony sheet located on the back table and submit to city staff. If you're attending remotely, please raise your hand in such a way that it's visible to the camera. We will go around Zoom windows and get each of you in turn. When you're called to testify, we require that you clearly and loudly state your full name and address. You will have up to three minutes to speak. The applicant will have 10 minutes initially plus five minutes for rebuttal. Members of the city council may ask questions of the applicant, staff, or anyone else who testifies. I now call to order the public hearing. And I will now cover the preliminary legal matters. The applicant has burden of proving that the application is consistent with the City of Amity's Development Code, Conferents of Plan, and other applicable municipal code provision and the Oregon statewide planning rules. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are Amity Development Code 3.110, Zone Change, 3.111 Annexation, and 2.103 R3 High Density Residential Zone. All testimony and evidence that speakers give us must concern the approval criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the Development Code or Conferents of Plan that the person testifying believes should apply to the decision. If your testimony would be repetitious, but you would like the opportunity to appeal the decision, you must sign and submit a public testimony sheet before the hearing is closed by the mayor. Only those who have appeared before the city council in person or in writing will have standing to appeal this item to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. Before the conclusion of the first public evidentiary hearing on this application, any participant may request a continuance or ask that the record be left open to present additional information that is within the scope of the hearing. If there is a request, the decision maker will either continue the public hearing by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, or leave the record open for at least seven days for additional written evidence, argument, or testimony. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence with sufficient detail to give the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue means that no appeal may be made to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Before we have the staff report, I will ask a few questions of the members of city council and then the audience. Does any member of the city council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias? Does any member of the city council wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any member of the city council? That concludes the legal matters. Testimony tonight will be in the following order. First, presentation of the staff report, then presentation of the applicant, and then presentation of the comments. Then we'll go into testimony of neutral parties, including government bodies, and finally rebuttal of the applicant limited to issues raised by comments. It's a lottery. Um, we'll now proceed to the staff presentation. And we have Holly with us and we have the report in front of us.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're good.
Wonderful. Uh, let's see. Okay, I'm going to share my screen here also so we can follow along together. For the record, my name is Holly Byram and I work for the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. My role as the contract city planner is to help the Planning Commission and city council understand the decision criteria before them when they receive land use applications. So tonight, we have an application for an annexation, which is accompanied by a zone change. This is for a 6,000-square-foot property located at the northeast corner, the intersection of Rice Lane and Merlot. I will forward through here. On page two, you'll see maps demonstrating the location of the property. I'll point out that the Merlot Estate subdivision is located to the north and the west of the subject property. And to the south of the subject property are residential neighborhoods as well. And to confirm, this property is designated for R3 zoning. On page three of the staff report, you'll see a little better map showing the location of that property on Rice Lane. Okay, so the criteria before the city council this evening are found in the Amity Development Code. Specifically, the first is Section 3.111, and that is for annexations. There are a couple different findings that the city needs to make. And I'll run through those briefly here. The first is that sufficient public notice was provided. And in this case, that meant mailing it to nearby property owners as well as publishing multiple notices in the newspaper. And then the city council needs to consider the criteria. And those include considering orderly and timely transition of rural land to urban land. In this case, we know the subject property is already surrounded on several sides by incorporated properties. We look at the property for natural hazards. In this case, there's no steep slopes or flood plain. This property doesn't serve to provide the community open space amenities or views. In terms of the transportation considerations, Merlot Street is already fully dedicated with 50-foot width. Rice Lane is not fully improved and not fully dedicated, which means that the applicant is required to dedicate six feet along the southern frontage on Rice Lane. And that matches the dedication from the Merlot Estate subdivision for their tract A. And then we also look at public services. Fortunately, water and sewer services are already available to this property. And those connections will be made by the developer at the time of development. One item to note here, there is an existing water line easement that runs through the property and the city is in the process of removing that easement. It's a historical easement that's no longer necessary. And then also, one thing to note, since the Planning Commission hearing, there were comments from Public Works about the existence potentially of a well on this property, a private well. If there is still a private well on this property, then it is the obligation of the applicant to work with the Oregon Water Resources Department to abandon and cap that well. And that has been added as a recommended condition of approval. Other considerations here are just the contribution of this property to provide housing for the community. And then following the annexation criteria, we've included the zone change criteria as well. There's a lot of redundancy here, but essentially the findings are that this property is well-located and well-suited for future development. While no development is proposed at this time, the applicant has included a site plan that demonstrates how a house could be configured on that property while still meeting the dimensional standards such as the setbacks of the R3 zone. Again, public facilities are available and it is the applicant's obligation to make connections to those. The R3 zone is consistent with the underlying comprehensive plan designation of high residential. So, in conclusion, both staff and the Planning Commission have found that this application meets the applicable criteria in the adopted Amity Development Code. There are just three recommended conditions of approval. The first being that the applicant is responsible for providing the legal description of the property to be annexed, as well as the half-street width of Rice Lane abutting the property. The second recommended condition is about the future development of that property and dedicating that six-foot right-of-way dedication on Rice Lane. And then the third one is the new one, and that is simply that the applicant is responsible for demonstrating that if there was an existing private well on the property, that it has been abandoned and capped prior to development of that property. So in conclusion, staff and Planning Commission recommend approval. There are sample motions for the city council on page 14 of the staff report. And then Exhibit A includes a couple of comments from consulting departments and agencies. And then following that is the application itself. I know the applicant is happy to answer questions. I can answer questions now or later, whichever the council prefers. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Are there any brief clarifying questions for staff at this time before we move on to that?
I have one question. Holly, I noticed in Criterion Four, they've mentioned that the O9 developer will be responsible for frontage sidewalk on the southern frontage prior to final occupancy. Was that not included in the conditions just because it's standard for building?
That's correct, yeah. The sidewalk would occur at the time of the building permit for the future development.
But not, it's not for the annexation?
Correct.
Okay, that was my one question.
I do, thank you. That sparked a memory here. I do want to address one question that was brought up in public testimony during the Planning Commission hearing. There were members of the Abutting Merlot Estates HOA present at that hearing, and they had a question about the tract A, which is used as the stormwater detention basin for Merlot Estates. Specifically, they wanted to know if this property were going, was going to send stormwater to their detention swale. The answer to that question is no, this property is not a part of that subdivision. It will not be a part of that HOA. The city engineers have reviewed it and found that stormwater from this property is not going to feed into that detention swale. Instead, because of the slopes, it would feed into the Rice Lane stormwater facility. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other staff questions, we can move into the applicant's presentation. Please take 10 minutes to present your application if needed. State your name and address for the record. And any written material or other evidence that you want staff to see need to be submitted to the city by May 4th.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Don Kelly. I'm a lawyer from Silverton, another small town. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant, which is MNZ. And MNZ stands for Mike and Nancy. So we're here to speak for them. I want to say that I've been making presentations on Amity's cases for a long, long time. Stop saying how long because it gets embarrassing. But this is the most thorough staff report I've ever read. It is just, I've read a lot of good ones. It's an excellent staff report. And that being said, we concur with the staff report. So of course, we love it. We concur with it. And there are conditions attached to it. We accept all of those conditions. That being said, I know you've had the staff report. You've all had a chance to look at this. You all know what we're talking about. I can read you the staff report, but I don't think that's what you want me to do. So we're going to stand on the staff report and accept it and on our application. And if you have any questions, we'd be glad if I could respond to them. I have two representatives of the applicant with me this evening. If I couldn't answer the questions, but I think the comprehensive plan questions and the zone code questions are all laid out thoroughly in the staff report. Staff recommended approval. Your Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. And we would ask that you approve this application. But then if you've got questions, we'd be glad to respond to them.
Any questions from the council at this time? I don't believe so. So I know you'll be here if something comes up. But we will move on to public testimony. If there's nothing else, yeah. So as I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, if you wish to testify during this hearing, if you're a current person, complete a testimony sheet and submit to staff now. If you're at this anywhere remotely, please raise your hand in such a way that it's visible to the camera. We'll go around through the Zoom window and get each of you in turn. When you're called to testify, we require that you clearly and loudly state your full name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak. Any written material or other evidence will need to be submitted to the city by May 4th. First, any presentations from proponents in the audience who are on Zoom? Seeing? Okay, are there any opponents to the application? Seeing none. Was there any written submitted commentary that wasn't addressed? Okay. I don't see a need for rebuttal at this time.
I agree with that.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I said that as a statement, it was a question in agreement. And then do we have a request for continuance? This is your one and only chance. Okay. Hearing none, I will move on. And with that, the public hearing is now closed. So I will open it up for discussions and deliberations by the city council. And if there's any additional clarifying questions for staff, go ahead at this time.
I don't have any questions. I think it was a really thorough report. I think we have all the information that seems pretty kind of, yeah.
Any additions from staff?
Not from me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, hearing none, at this time, I'll ask if there's any member of the city council that wishes to make a last comment or motion.
Motion to approve annexation file number 2410-01ANX, with the concurrent zone change as presented. Adopt the findings and recommend conditions of approval contained in the staff report and direct staff to prepare and enact the ordinance. Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve annexation file number 2410-01ANX, with the concurrent zone change as presented. Adopt the findings and recommend conditions of approval contained in the staff report and direct staff to prepare and enact the ordinance. Any further discussion? Callers in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. He's good eye.
Okay, perfect.
I have him putting me there.
Thank you, okay.
While the transition will be ready, if you have a question, I'm waiting. Or if yours dies.
Any.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Okay. Cynthia, I feel like they usually talk to me live. When we make up old business, of which there is none, and new business, we will start with a presentation from Infoway County Council.
Thank you for joining us.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Thompson. I'm the transit manager for Amity County Transit. Thank you for inviting me tonight. Keep a hold of the slide. First thing I wanted to ask is because I, it's been a while since I've been here. And I think there may be a lot of new people. And I don't know how much you actually know about Amity County Transit. So I thought the very first thing is, what would you really like me to cover? So I don't listen. And I can tell you what I am planning, except just a very quick overview of the services, ridership, how that relates to Amity ridership, a little bit about bus stops. Of course, what you're really probably wanting to know about is the contribution. Do you obviously know whether requesting contribution on budget time? And then I'm going to mention a little bit of what's happening with fares and with bus stops. Any questions I have? So if there's anything else that anybody would like me to... Oh, I will mention one thing. Tomorrow morning, I'm actually giving an update to the board of commissioners. So if you're really trying to be, you can always turn on and listen because I haven't been on a traffic update for probably two years. So I'm going to cover a whole bunch of things.
You worked that out three weeks ago, though. You're pretty good at it.
Yeah, that was, yeah. Well, this one's going to be everything on the assignment we're doing. So if you really want more, you can certainly tune in at 10 o'clock. And I'm going to give an update for 15, 20, something like that.
Cynthia, just so you know, the council does have the letters sent out.
Oh, you did, I missed that.
Yeah, we got the letter. We printed it out for everyone to see.
Oh, good.
The letter requesting, and then, I think that was, oh, and then the ridership stuff. General ridership.
And I'll give you a little more specific detail on that as well.
And I was also seeing the main curiosity that we aren't aware of is what ridership is like. So what the routes are here and what ridership is like.
Now, I will cover that. Anything else? Sue. Okay. I think I'll probably, I think you've obviously a lot of time there. I mean, I want to be fast in your agenda. I don't think this will actually take very long. But, you know, I want to give you time to answer your questions you may have. So just generally, so in case you didn't know, Amity County Transit has four local routes in Greenville. We have four key routes that go between Greenville, Hillsborough, Salem, Bradlin, and Tiger. We operate about 35,000 hours of service throughout Amity County. Amity County has about 752 square miles. And we do demand response service as well. Primarily, it's in Greenville and Dover, but we sometimes do go outside of that area. So if you go to the next slide, it kind of repeats what I just said, but it adds more information of damage to service. Our earliest route begins at about 4:00 a.m. and our latest route comes in at about 9:00 p.m. All of our buses are, will be accessible with ramp access to ramps that go out and in. All of the buses except the dial-in demand response buses have bike racks that hold three lights. Those are probably people who ride bikes. Amity, of course, is served by Route 11, which is the route that goes to Salem. And it, well, I'll get to where I should be on the next slide. This is sort of a general, this is a general overview of all services. That first line just has population and employment and percentage of people in poverty, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm not going to go through and read all this, but if you're interested, you know, I can lead you a copy of the presentation and get a look at that.
Super quick, can I interrupt you? I just, Cynthia, Counselor Luther, can you hear the presentation?
Yes, Mayor, I can.
Okay, I just want to make sure. And then we'll get a copy because I doubt you can read.
No, you aren't going to go through this.
Yeah, thank you.
But it is, I am going to hone in on Amity, which should be able to be truly parallel. So I will do that with you. And then I will tell you this, 30,000-foot level, ridership pre-COVID was about close to 300,000 a year to hold the whole system. It really, you know, has gone a lot. And now, kind of slowly backward, about 200,000. But we do a little bit less service, each of the extra routes. We're doing a half those anymore. So we increased our demand response type services. And then if you get to the next slide, what's happening is cost has gone, or is enough. Buses cost twice as much as they used to cost. Every day it's twice as long to do the bid and service costs. We contracted service out to private provider, which we call First Transit. They got bought out by a company called Transdell. And our latest contract with them is a lot more than the one before. I'll just say that. And so, anyway.
It's one per picture.
Yeah, that's okay. So if this slide is about, we went in and said, okay, we're going to have to make some service adjustments. We're going to have to talk with our service provider about giving us possibly a new proposal or we're going to have to do a request proposal and get a new contract with a new service provider. So that last slide we had shows some of the things that we're looking at as far as changing service. And the only thing I'm going to really hone in on that applies to you is we do have news about reducing one trip on Route 11. That's bad. But the good news is we are doing a partnership. We have this pilot... That's bad, but the good news is, we are doing a partnership, we have this pilot project where Benton County, Yanmore County, and this private provider all got some grant funding for the state transportation improvement funding special, to do service between Eugene and Hillsborough. And so, and actually, it was between Mendel and Junction City. It's a big long story, I don't want to get too detailed, but bottom line is, we're going to do, kind of join forces and provide more service and do it as a partnership between the three of us. And so I think it'll actually improve service, even though it might be that during that time of that grant, we may actually contract with a private provider to be the one to join the buses, so it could be that you'll see Yanmore County Transit bus for all the trips except one or two, which might be this private provider. So I'm happy to share more about that as that, if we'll also plan the values of that to get implemented by late summer, early fall, so, up 2025. But now, to what you were about to, I don't know. So AMI ridership, or Route 11 ridership, is fiscal year 2024, which ended in June of 2024, ridership annually is 9,200, which, with, the only way I can tell how many people or rides come from AMI is, we did our transit development plan back in 2018, and we did an onboard surveys, and so in onboard surveys, we actually counted for a two week period how many people got on and off at their various stops. So I have to use those numbers without, I don't have anything better than that at the moment. So it's about 20% of the ridership, I think, probably attributed somewhere around 10%, to people getting on and off in AMI. So if you do that, then that would mean about 1,844 rides from AMI in 2024. Year to date, which is ranges through February, 2025, you have 1,249. So if everything stays on track, that would be about a 2% increase over last year, by time of the end of this year. And if you look at the year before, 2023, it was 8,880 for the year for that route, and so it's about a 4% increase from April 23, which is four, and also from 24 to 25, it might be about 2% increase. So, and you can see your ridership is about, you know, it's 1,844, so right around 1,800, 1,700 a year. That calculates down to on a daily, then I would say it is, I wrote it down here. Approximately 700 a day, 153 a month, for 1,834 a year. And that may sound not that great, but you know, you have two stops, it's a small town, it's not, it's actually not too bad, and it may be low, to be honest. We are, we do have new technology now on our buses, and so we will, we have the capability, it's, we're training issue, this problem, we can capture, but we can actually look and see where people are boarding and exactly where we're working. So pretty soon, I'll be able to just print a record out and tell you exactly how many people got on and stopped here, but unfortunately, I can't do that today. So if we go to the next slide, this is just a little background on why we come to write you a letter and ask you for money. You probably know this, but maybe not if you're near the council. Yanmore County Transit was actually formed as a county service district in 2007, and then there were a couple nonprofits that provided service. And then in 2012, the county decided to hire and outside private company to provide the transportation. And at that time, there was an agreement that, as a service, so all the cities, there's 10 cities, there's a tribe, are all part of the district. And you, you, you became part of that district by resolution, you moved after the resolution, but it didn't include any funding. I was told when I came, I've been in Yanmore County Transit for 10 years, that there was a verbal agreement that the cities would contribute a certain amount, and that Mendel and Nibber being the largest cities would contribute, there's an amount that I was given, I was given a check. So when I got here, I thought, well, I'll believe that, I don't have, if you go against it, and then I decided my way on the passing cities, if they would contribute the amount that they agreed to at that time. And then I put a 5% increase every year. So that's how I came up with the number, it's like, I had calculated it back to 2012, when these are running through, and it's a 5% increase each year, and that's how I come up with the amount. Obviously, it is a request, it's not a requirement, and you don't have to do it, you can do it if you can do it. When I first got here, cities would tend to think, oh, I'm asking for grant funding here, no. I hope you see it as something that's just, it's a service that's part, that you, it's your service, you're part of the district, and as a line item in your budget, if you have the funds, that would be okay. Obviously, long term, we need to have, come up with some kind of source of funding. Nine, almost 90, more than 90% of the funding for Yanmore County Transit comes from federal state money. The county contributes about a half a million, the larger cities contribute around 20,000, and in smaller cities, it's, it's sort of depends on the year, sometimes they'll contribute 1,000, 15, or whatever they get for it. But we're at the point, as of probably next year, that we're either going to have to reduce service, because we don't have a match funding. I mean, we've gotten a lot of grant money for the buses and building hospitals, but match is a problem, so either we have to come up with some kind of other funding source, or, you know, some say we should just have the cities pay more. I don't, personally, I don't know that that would, we'd have to ask you to pay too much, and already, I don't think it's that easy for people to pay more than asking more, so. So anyway, there's been, there's a lot of discussion right now.
I do have a question there, so around 90% of the current funds you said, and is the usual match, they ask for about 20%?
Is it, our primary federal operating is almost 50%, but all, everything else is typically between 10 and 20. So buses are typically 20, but they're not always. Whenever we, like, our permitted maintenance and our administration accounts from that federal source, that one's in the 10.27, but any of the operating that's like our fixed rights, it's the 40s, it's been widely, it's somewhere in the number, but it's 40s, 8, whatever, 42 minutes up, 0.42 minutes up, if you can imagine. On those, so.
So if you had total operating expenses, having a goal to shoot for coming up with 20% of that total?
It's a good, it's a good, it's a good. And then with the new state transportation program, which is the employee paid tax, a pass, and has to play his team, that helps a lot. We're actually, every two years, the county, we have to adopt a SWIFT plan, and this, we're maximizing that, those funds as much as we can, because also it's matched, because they can match very well. There's a lot of things, a lot of things changing at the one hall, so, who knows? See, now, lots of stuff is happening. I got my first real, real thing, and that is, we have five buses on order, and two of the buses have authorized fund but not obligated fund. So the manufacturer may not build those. They may choose, like, until we know that they're obligated, because then that's more like a contract agreement versus just approved. So that, I don't know what's going to happen with those things, and I'm getting a few little, there's some delight in funding, so the county will cover the operation, and we probably won't get our normal reimbursements from the feds till late fourth quarter 2026. So those are the first real things that are kind of happening from the changes that are going on currently. So yeah, the price is 4,715, and as I already said, it's my department, so. Does anybody have any questions about that? So you go to the next slide. I just wanted to mention really quickly about fares. We, we have been fareless since the pandemic, and the goal was, well, since it was, there was a whole bunch of reasons why, but then we thought, well, this is a good time, we should come up with a new fare policy and new collection system, because pre-pandemic, it was $1.25 a ride, $35 a month for pass, and you had to cash or check, well, we did update it. So we thought, well, we'll come up with, so it's been a long process. We did a report first on what would it be if we just were fareless system. You guys may recall me sending out a little brief survey, trying to get the, a read on whether leadership throughout county, like cities, support not having a fare or having a fare. It was pretty clear from that surveys that city councils at the 10 cities, the majority want us to charge a fare. The users don't, and the nonprofits that get passes for the users don't, so we sort of have a bit of a split. So we came up with a fare structure, we just presented that to Yanmore County Transit Advisory Committee a couple of weeks ago, and then we're going to have a work session with the board on May 8th, so if you're interested in that, you can listen in. And then, I'm, the next step, unless the board decides something else, we'll have a fairly large outreach effort to talk to everybody about the fare structure. I can tell you that it's based, we're looking at something that's more like day passes and, like, more of a day pass, and everything will be electronic, and we'll buy the tickets on your phone, you'll be able to, we'll have an mechanism for people that don't have that ability, and there'll be an inexpensive program for people who can afford it. Because I will say, the majority of our riders are not probably able to afford what the fare structure is going to be, but there's a lot of other options, there will be options for that. So I think it, it will, it will work well, it's just a matter of, if everybody can get consensus around the fairness aspect.
Is diet, is your programs' dial ride intertwined with health services and reimbursement through insurance? Or is it separate?
It's separate. We try to partner, we can, but typically, the, like, the CCOs, they have a program called World Ride, and we do have a plan, we have a coordinate plan with all human services programs, so you can go and see what all the transportation programs are in the county. But we try to coordinate as much as we can, it's kind of difficult. A lot of times, the people in the, in the healthcare, the ones who qualify with the healthcare, they're going to, say, a medical facility in Salem, and, you know, it's just not, it doesn't really work, and our dial ride doesn't go that far, so. So we try, but it isn't, I will say that. Okay, next, bus stop. We have been working on the bus stop improvement project for far too long, but it's, we're getting very close, finally. We have about 33 buses, we have 26 shelters, and then we have 100, and you can go to the next slide, 175 bus stops. The process to get them permitted and has been way, it's been kind of ridiculous, to be honest, but we're getting there. 70 stops are on ODOT, driveway, roadways, 18 are in different municipalities, we have, I think we, this slide says 12, I think there's actually a few more, we're trying to have a shared, shared stops. So finally, because this has been taking, I've literally been working on this since I've been here, almost eight years at least, and we finally got some really pretty decent temporary signage, and we were placing that at all the stops, and they're, they have, they have like a weight at the bottom, and they have the stop, and, and so we have about, almost three quarters of those done, the rest will be done in about the next month. And so every stop will soon have a actual, at least a temporary, they call them a channelizer, a sign there. And then those will be the locations where the actual, real signs will end up going. There is a website, a link in this that you can go to that tells you all about that project, and then there's a map that will show you every single stop. So now, the next one, we get to, oh, I already talked about it. That, that's what the temporary, if you go back, that's what the temporary signs look like, they're just a little one, they call them channelizer. And you can actually put your phone up to the QR code, and it'll go take you to the page on the website for the routes, so that's kind of cool. So now, to AMI, you are lucky enough, you actually have shelter on both sides of the street, but your, the ODOT is doing grant project, which is definitely, and we have tried accordingly with them, rarely have been able to do, to do it, but here, they actually think, this isn't a picture, unfortunately, of that, and if you click on that link, you can actually get to the street view, and then you could go and see where it actually is, and if it works, like, if it's internet in here, but. So where the current shelter is, if you turn around and go the other way, like you're on, yeah, turn around, go back, then you'll get to where our shelter is. So right there, that, they're doing a curb grant project right there, ODOT would like us to move that shelter. And then if you go, look down a little farther, just right close to this building, there's shelters kind of off the street on the other side. And they, and so I wanted to ask you, if you see, there are little, yeah, right there. So if you turn around and go back to where that original picture was, which I should be able to tell you what the street is, go back up there, we were wondering if you guys would be open to us placing the shelters, keep going a little further. I'm glad you're there. No, I think, yeah, it is a little too far, go back.
Before, isn't it?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, see on that side of the street, the little benches? We could have a shelter there, and then go across the street, right somewhere on that section right there. And it really took parking, and I don't know, if you're open to it, that might be a better, better solution. I know that AMI had an issue with where the shelters currently are, the one that's on that corner by the Chevron, because when you were pulling up and trying to collect, you could see, so we took the glass out of that one. And, and ODOT wants it moved. We don't, we could just tell them, they don't ever do a whole question, so. So anyway, that's the list. Is, if you're, you guys can certainly take time and think about that, but if you are interested in that, it'd be good to let us know, and we could work on working with ODOT to make that happen.
So with, are you proposing moving the one from the library down?
Yes, and the other one, yeah.
So they would be across the street?
Yeah, then they'd be across from the street, and it might, they're kind of better locations in a lot of ways, and they're not very far from where they are now.
And where ODOT is proposing about right where your first race, right?
Yeah, they're going to, the curb rent there, and then that's an ADA spot, I was curious if anybody knew.
It will stay in the next, in the next spot, I think.
Why, it's, yeah, because I think, I don't, I don't, I don't think I've seen their designs yet.
No, so their, so their current plan is to get rid of this ADA spot, potentially create a little about all along here, and then move the bus shelter down to, essentially, the ADA stop is right down the inner, the crosswalk would come from there.
And I'm okay with that, too, that's fine. The other suggestion was just something one of our consultants, who's been working on bus stop projects, thought I should ask you. So I'm totally fine with, I'm just that, and leaving them where it is, but if you wanted to move them down, you can.
Nathan, can, we see the opposite side of the street from where ODOT is proposing that one?
Yeah, so they're gonna.
And just what's right across the street from where, no, like, if you stayed where you were?
Oh.
Yeah, like.
So it's going to be, but they'll have us move it down right there.
And then, like, it's directly across the street?
You do kind of have a little, it's parking. And in front, is that a community center? That's a house, that's a house.
That's a house, this is where we're at, right?
Oh. Well, you'd have control of that if not by your place.
All right, thank you, I just, it's nice to.
Okay, that's, that's, any questions, or, I know I took longer than I meant to, so. If you have a question, we have to answer them.
I don't think so, I really appreciate you coming and presenting this information. I will share, so I have advocated for us contributing, because I think that it's a great service to our community. I know there's people that depend on that, right, we don't have all the resources here, and so I know it's a needed service, but without the information to back it up, it's really hard to justify, because our budgets are tight, just like everyone else's. So I think it's super insightful to hear what's happening, what's trying to be moved forward, and just.
I should mention one more thing, because, so, in the former STIF plans, we had allocated funding for smaller communities, so that if you really wanted to come up with a plan like, hey, we want a shopping shuttle from AMI to Mendel, or whatever it is. Now, that was back when we, costs had not gone through the roof, and we were adding a lot of services, but that still is a priority for us, and in the transit development plan as well. So there is money for a shopper's shuttle, or a medical shuttle, or some kind of, like, for smaller communities. The problem that I have, I don't have enough staff or time to go out and talk, have, and work with the small communities to come up with something. So if you have some specific need or interest, and you have a group of people that want to say, hey, could you ever do this type of service, now would be the time to bring that up. Because we did get a grant to help serve elderly and disabled and older adults, and we're going to be looking at doing some various types of shopper or medical type shows. And I know that you've got, you don't. And I know that you've got, you don't get the benefit as much of the, you know, the demand response services. The bigger cities kind of have most of those advantage. And then Amy, I could, I didn't give you a lot of the whole system stats, but I can send that to Nathan. Nathan, if you have anything else you want, that you want to share with other folks, that that question might be happening. I just like to introduce this to you.
Yes, thank you, Nathan, thank you.
Okay, our next item of new business is recycling modernization act funding. Welcome.
Good evening, Nick King, who's a council staff community. My name is Dan Blue and I'm the government operations manager for Recology Northern Oregon. Nice to see all of you. I'm going to go fairly quickly through this in just a bit of time. Here to talk a little bit about the recycling modernization act, and how potentially anybody will benefit from it. Also start with just a couple of updates. I want to let you know that we've started a new artist residency program here in Yankton County. What we do is we provide a stipend to artists who have access to the transfer station to take landfill-bound materials out and create art from it. It's something that we've done in San Francisco, we have it in Seattle, Portland area, and also the Astoria, Warren. It's a fantastic program, open to anybody in our service area. And we're partnering with Associated Artists of Yankton County on this project. Applications are open now. So if you know any artists that are interested, I can find information on our webpage. I can get it to Nathan and he can share it. Also, we had one snow event this year in Concord, hopefully no more. We recovered fairly quickly. Let's see. Also, historically, we've had one Facebook page for Recology Western Oregon. Recently, we split that so that we have a coast page and, you know, Yankton County, Polk and Grand Ron Page. So that, encouraging folks to follow us on Facebook, especially during the inclement weather, they're really quick up to date, you know, updates on weather service. We also are looking into a robo-text, robo-call system so that during inclement weather events or other service interruptions, instead of you having to come to us to find that information, you'll get a text or a phone call that says, hey, due to X, Y, Z, we're not able to service your truck today. We may be parked out, we'll try to get it, and all that sort of thing. So we're looking at that here in the coming months. Okay, I think that's it for my updates. So jump over to the next slide please. Recycling Modernization Act basically is an update to Oregon's Opportunity to Recycle Act, which was passed in nineteen ninety. It is a extended producer responsibility legislation, which means that the producers of packaging materials, so cardboard, paper, plastic, glass, metal, and whatever any product arrives to you in, the manufacturers are now going to start contributing funds into the state of Oregon to help cover the costs of our statewide recycling system. I mentioned extended producer responsibility. It really is a shared responsibility system, we'll have to see, but on electric producers. The second group is the Producer Responsibility Organization. This is a third-party nonprofit that is working with the state of Oregon to represent the manufacturers, but also implement the program statewide. So it's, it's called Circular Action Alliance, we'll talk about them a little bit more in a second. The third thing that is hard to see is service providers, that's Recology and other garbage haulers and recycling service providers around the state. The next one is your category, local government. And the next one over is recycling facilities. This is where your combing of recycling in your carts goes to be sorted and prepared for end markets, which is the last icon on the right there. So it is meant to be a shared responsibility system. Next slide please. You might not be able to tell, but that set of icons represents the manufacturers. And this was the first group, big companies target, Amazon, Kraft, you know, some very familiar brand names globally. They started this. We have, I think, over twelve thousand companies now signed up to participate in this EPR legislation. Next slide please. So the recycling modernization.
And then we're pushing up, so it said that they were the only ones to be approved in Oregon? So they have exclusive rights or just no one else has done it yet?
Yeah, there was, initially, they were taking proposals from multiple, multiple nonprofits. But Circular Action Alliance is the only one that actually submitted a proposal to serve as the third party. They also are positioning themselves in many other states, California, other states as well, to be this, this kind of third-party nonprofit that implements this extended producer responsibility law. Which is being replicated in many states.
Interesting.
So what the, what the law does, it does a number of things. It will expand recycling curbside for multifamily, commercial businesses statewide, especially for places that don't have recycling yet. Because we already have curbside recycling, we're not going to receive capital funds in this portion for the city of Avene. It also focuses on doing education and outreach, contamination reduction. Also creates standard lists of recyclables. So if you move from one city in Oregon to anywhere else in Oregon, you'll be recycling the exact same materials curbside, which is not what happens today, so it's very confusing. Next slide.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Does that mean that, say, Amity would get an expansion of glass curbside?
So we don't have curbside glass yet, right? So I'm going to talk about glass here in a minute. It is, it's one of those kind of, it's being handled differently in certain areas. And I'll talk about that in a second. Yes, I'll get back to you. Next slide please. So I mentioned statewide collection list, so that uniform list. There's also a separate list called a pro materials list, or Producer Responsibility Organization list, which are the harder to recycle materials. We'll talk about how those are going to be recycled in a minute, next slide. I mentioned multifamily is a big focus. This is one of the hardest areas to get clean recyclables, you know, reduce contamination. So there's a big push to improve recycling at multifamily properties, apartment complexes, et cetera. So that would be one area that they're focusing on, next slide. And then I mentioned education and outreach and contamination reduction. There'll be a very large push statewide to implement this. I'm going to show you a slide here in just a sec to go over that, next slide please. So, one more up. There we go. So I mentioned a uniform statewide list. Your recycling cart actually already collects the majority of these materials. The only thing that's really different from what you currently are able to recycle curbside and what will be added is the nursery pumps, those little, you know, the little green one are right there. So not a big change for Amity, honestly, initially, with this. Next slide.
I'm excited.
One more. Did you turn the lights over? Was it missing? One more, there it is. So I mentioned a pro list, this is the harder to recycle materials. Aerosol cans, singly used propane canisters, expanded polystyrene, otherwise known as styrofoam, plastic films, grocery store bags, that sort of thing, shredded paper. We actually allow that into carts now, we're just going to keep allowing that. And the carts are going to be put in a brown paper bag and roll up. Glass, glass is on this list, which means that the Circular Action Alliance has to take responsibility for setting up collection systems statewide to manage glass. Where there is already curbside glass, so for example, Newburgh, Mandeville, and the closest cities, pet, parliamentary area, everybody has glass curbside, they're going to keep collecting it from Newburgh. They're not going to change that. In the future, glass will be collected in depots, along with many of these other materials. So you may be on the list for a potential pro materials depot to collect these materials. If not, it's going to be in a nearby community where you'd be able to take during certain hours, all of these materials. One benefit to us is that CAA will, will offset the cost of us to manage glass. So we could put a dumpster in, if we don't already have a dumpster here in town for glass. It's like a front-load container or something like that.
We do have, we do have a dumpster.
Okay, great, thank you.
They don't get emptied enough.
It doesn't get emptied enough, I'll take note of that. The good thing then for Amity is that some of the costs associated with that will be covered by the Circular Action Alliance. So that's where that packaging manufacturer money comes into the system. Will come back to your service provider and help offset some of the costs of that. So we should see some, some cost reduction related to your cost.
So for the expected depots, who manages those? Would it be Recology or would it be the city?
They are going to be essentially delivering shipping containers wherever they place these little depots. And they're going to fund point two five FTE to manage those. And if it's at an existing depot like ours in Mendeville, that will help offset some of our labor costs. For new locations, I think they might work with cities, or they might work with service providers. That's kind of to be determined. But yeah, they are providing funding, they're providing shipping containers, they're providing equipment, they're providing all the transportation, so there's no cost to us.
Right, so we don't.
Sorry, sorry. Okay. I think that was a question in a survey of whether or not the city would, City of Amity would be interested in hosting or in working with the Circular Action Alliance or other partners to develop a depot within the city. At first glance, it's like, oh, you know, I don't know what we're going to do with people, or you know. If that's something that we're interested in, we can definitely, I think there's room to kind of push for that or, or to kind of step out in front and say, hey, we'll, we'll take it on for our, our area, right? For nearby communities to kind of get done with.
And I know there are some folks in this community that are really active participating in the plastics project. Would like to see an expansion of recycling here. We're here to support that in any way we can. I guess what I'm really trying to accomplish here is to let you know that there is hundreds of millions of dollars flowing into the state of Oregon effective July one of this year to help bring the cost of recycling services down, expand recycling services to communities that don't have it, offset some of our management costs and transportation costs. All of it to help kind of remove some of the pressure that recycling services has on our garbage recycling rates.
So even with that, we have the plastics projects here and then zero waste.
Yeah.
And when we heard about that, people are now paying to dispose of these materials. So that will, that, yeah, that will phase out, right, as these things are?
Some of these items will be essentially free for you to recycle. Some of them are still not going to be on this list, and that's where the plastics project folks offer that service. And they're, they're five dollars per bag or whatever it is, they do help to offset some of their costs in managing it. We're actually transporting all the plastics project material on their behalf up to a lower area to the market. So that's just us helping out.
So those will be a place for that to fill in the act?
Yes, absolutely, we love that, they're great, they're a great partnership. Okay, next slide please. Need to go on? Yeah, okay. So there are a number of different sources of funding. Really the only one that, aside from whatever I already talked about, about offsetting some of the, you know, management costs of recycling, every city, every jurisdiction in Oregon is eligible to for contamination reduction funding. And this is calculated at three dollars per capita per year. It has to be used for contamination reduction education and outreach practices. This is something that you don't have to accept it, you don't have to do any of that. You don't actually have to do this because you're a community under four thousand. But it's available to you. What we're, with most of our smaller jurisdictions, what we're doing is recommending you delegate those resources to us. We pull it together with resources from other cities that we serve in Yankton County. And then we roll out a contamination reduction program on your behalf. And that would include reporting to DQ annually on those activities. And also when we come back to you for our annual rate review process, we would have a line item that says, here's, here's where that contamination reduction funding went, and your share of it, and how people has it conceived. So that was the thing that, by the end of this month, the City of Amity needs to submit a funding authorization form to Oregon DQ. But actually doing those forms in partnership with many cities that we serve, if you want to designate us as a potential recipient of those funds, that's what that form does. And then once that is complete, we have signatures from you and signatures from us, then the next phase would be, we would enter into a, I mean, agreement with the Circular Action Alliance to actually accept and receive those funds and then put them to work in your community on your behalf. You could alternatively take the money yourself and do contamination reduction funding inside your community. Okay, I think I skipped a foot. Let's go back a little bit and really add up. I mentioned education and outreach. The Circular Action Alliance will do comprehensive education and outreach, everything from television commercials, to radio advertising, to print materials, to newspaper articles. And then they will also be supplying us with updated decals and brochures with information about all of these changes. It's going to be comprehensive and it'll be available in multiple languages, which is another benefit that's more costly. So I think that's it now. Any remaining questions that you might have?
What is your question?
Yeah, okay, great question. What does that look like? Well, we asked the DQ, like, if they have a list of things they expect us to do with this money, and they said they're still working on it. I'm like, you know, we have to turn in these forms by the end of the month. I'm like, yeah, we know. Our best guess is, is that it will be things such as, I have a slide on this, that it's public-facing messaging, so articles, bill backs, like information on the back of you, you could go over your garbage recycling bill, other things like tabling events you could use that funds for. What I know we're just doing, and so are a lot of other haulers in the metro region, is we actually have cameras that can see into where the recyclables are dumped into the truck. It's called a hopper. So we have cameras on our truck that can see that and take a picture of it. There is AI technology that can, I can look at the pile of recyclables and identify contamination that is there, like plastic bags or inappropriate types of plastics. We can snap a picture of that and then send an email or, or text, whatever, with the photo to that customer whose cart was just picked up and say, hey, oops, we noticed you put plastic film in your recycling cart. Please don't do that, it bumbles up our system. So that's one thing that if we were able to pull resources and contribute some of our own resources, we're, we're very interested in doing that because the most effective place to stop contamination of recycling is where it happens at the curb, and that's the best way to do it. That's a couple of things.
So we have a couple Recology-related action items. So we have our recommendation here. I know councilors in Oregon, you know, wanted more information, and we just got more information. And it was, it was just versus one of the benefits of us doing that internally versus partnering. Do you still have outstanding questions for staff or Nathan? Personally, I think that that fully might go a long ways to be able to have, have a harder punch in things. So if there's no questions, do we have a motion tonight on this so we can make a decision in the Friday deadline?
I need to authorize DQ to direct the contamination reduction programming to Recology. The City of Amity's waste recycling provider.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. authorize DQ to direct contamination reductions programming to Recology. The City of Amity's waste and recycling provider. Any further discussion? All of us here, please, if I might say why?
Why?
Any opposed, please, if I might say no?
Thank you. Do you want me to stay up for the next item?
Um, yes, please.
Okay.
If you don't mind. I'll pass this over to you to start, Nathan. But this is Amy's cleanup day in Recology's Green, Tri-State Green. Will you just give a rundown, Nathan, first off, about what has changed and what that might look like for Amity?
Uh, yes, I will. So typically, the City of Amity does two cleanup days each year, two cleanup day kind of events. Recology typically helps us out by providing some grant funding for that. They usually subsidize about half of the cost of those events. Usually through, you know, formations of drive time and, or.
With containers.
Containers. And so we rely on that. Recology let us know that at, by the end of this year, they're wanting local government specifically, that, that kind of local government customer to move away from their cyber grant system, focusing their cyber grants on other customers, or, or just kind of trying to split that out, right?
Yeah, I would describe it, we have a very rigorous compliance program to maintain transfer. to maintain transparency in how our funds are used. And because you're a public entity, we kind of put you through a complex process when you request a donation from us. And that's to protect, you know, your citizens, protect us as a company. But it's organized when we have to do it every year. We have a multi-page application to ask for a donation. So our recommendation as a company is that instead of you having to ask us and us going through this process to approve it, then you just do a simple modification of your franchise agreement that says Recology shall provide two days of us for city cleanup support in the form of containers and/or the cost of garbage disposal. And once it's in the franchise agreement, then we don't have to go through this whole compliance approval process with our corporate office. So it could be as simple as a, you know, two-sentence addition amendment to the franchise that just memorializes this thing that we've been doing for many years on your behalf. That's kind of what we're, but we don't have to do it now. It would be something that we'd bring back to you later in the year. Just wanted to give you a heads up that we're encouraging that direction instead of going through our cyber grant process.
But I want to clarify, that's actually passing the cost on to the customer rather than being an actual grant from Recology?
Not necessarily. I would need to come back with you. It's a great question because I was thinking about that as I was saying those words. I love myself, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was wondering. So what is the full cost of one event usually? And then what do we want to leave out because I know?
I believe the invoices or bills essentially that I usually see are around $3,500, $3,600. And usually, Recology essentially provides a grant or donation for $1,800 about. So we pay about $1,700, $1,800, I think. Each time.
So we're doing, I mean, we're, when we hold two cleanup days, that's $7,000 in service.
And we pay for about $3,500, $3,600.
Do you happen to know off the top of your head how many services are in Amity within city limits?
Oh, gosh, I do not off the top of my head. I know you have about 1,700 citizens and I don't know the total household count.
So, I mean, yeah, we have 697 in water connection.
But I don't want to know why of our citizens have the trash service.
They're supposed to.
I was gonna say 1,700, but I circle a lot of different cities, so.
I think there probably is over 90% of our citizens have garbage service in city.
And it is in our ordinance? But you have to have trash service as a requirement?
I don't think it is.
I can, I can find that.
And to your point, I will look that up for sure, whether, because currently, our donations are not built. It's not a allowable cost in our franchise. So I want to get clarification before I come back in front of you again to talk about this. Because I should know that.
Yeah. But I can see we're looking at, we, if there's around 650 Recology users, that's $100 we're paying for each for, to hold two a year. And so... So potentially could add $25 to each quarter, you know, if we were gonna absorb the whole cost into?
Into the rates by spreading it across. We're spreading it out to all customers. Let me get back to you because I-
Yeah. I think that is at least the informational tipping point that we would want to know. And then, not that it would make the decision one way or another, but we can't have a discussion we need to about changing the franchise agreement until we know that works.
Absolutely. And again, I wasn't hoping to have a decision this evening just to introduce the topic. And this question is super helpful for me because I will get this everywhere I go.
Right.
And I should know.
Um, no, we appreciate having you here because it's a lot easier than us giving Nathan a list of questions and then getting it to you. So I know that you'll be back.
Yes, yes. And on that note, we will be submitting our financial reviews by April 1st, which is the annual. I will probably be seeing you again in the spring. So if there's any other questions or anyone interested in the arts program, reach out to me if you need them. I really appreciate your time. See you.
Thank you for coming.
If you want to send a link to Nathan, he can pass it on to us. We have quite a few arts programs that are local that we would have passed on.
We'll do that. Okay, thank you. Have a great day.
Excuse me.
Can I have the table?
Yes. Yes, please.
I move to table the motion to pursue a franchise amendment with apology until further information is provided.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second to table this agenda amendment until further information is presented. Any further discussion? Any other information that we want to come back on this agenda?
I think that's the key. That's always the answer. What are the financials that are attached to this small amendment?
Yeah, and then we get those maybe that can be your session to be clear. Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor to table this item, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Please signify by saying no. Motion passes. We will move on to the city ball field policy. So this is also a work session item. We have baseball softball teams interested into utilizing more our ball fields and can pass that. We needed an update to the policy that would kind of outline current needs rather than past needs. So we have a couple exhibits of the Amity athletic use policy revised and the registration form. Nathan, is there anything that you want to add?
Um, not a ton. Mostly, just for your reference, mostly this policy just kind of gives the city staff the authority to kind of work with people and try to schedule it out as best we can. But ultimately, it's gonna come down to, you know, a decision between Monatacha and myself of, okay, this is, this is what we'll give you, right? You can ask, you know, you can submit a reservation request with all times in the world, and we're gonna try our best to work it out. But it essentially just gives us that. It includes some requirements like insurance for organized teams. And then, you know, some general field use policies, damages, mentions of misconduct, right? But it's, it's pretty, pretty open and gives us that ability to negotiate with people and to take reservation requests well ahead of time if more.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah?
No surprise. Um, so on the athletic field rules, in section B, we list the use hours between 8:00 AM and dusk. Is that because of noise ordinance? Like, our parks open on to dusk. And I could see during the summer how hot days, a 7:00 AM practice might be nice. And that's well within our noise ordinance. I didn't know if that was specific 8:00 AM for a reason or?
This was largely a congleration of two other well-identified policies that I found. So I think that 8:00 AM represents a relic of one of those other policies that I said, oh, 8:00 AM seems reasonable. I think you're absolutely right. On a hot summer day, there's, there might be a team, right, that wants to, it'd be the heat, get out there at 7:00 AM. And as far as our park rules, I think that would be totally necessary. So if you want me to change that to align to the park rules you've done on the desk?
But like, for scheduling purposes, you're gonna have to take a time on your application? And so you might want to have, like, maybe change it to 6:00 AM till dusk? But if you just say-
6:00 AM might disturb some neighbors if you are, I would say, but-
So how come we have to specify time at the beginning but then at the end we can just say dusk?
Well-
Dusk changes for it's normal, so it's just wrong, yeah.
So some ordinances that we have attached to our park for other purposes are 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
I think we stay consistent with whatever other hours are.
Yeah, this is for the summertime. They need to light outside at 9:00 PM anyway.
Well, and so our park is open on to dusk, but there's, there's 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM as like for trespassing purposes, like just because for definite times. So I think that that would fall under staff making a reasonable decision. If someone wants to act at 9 o'clock at night right now, you can say, I'm sorry, our park closes, is closed in this time and not reserve our reservation. But-
Well, usually you want it kind of fringe, but not reserved at night.
Right, yeah. I mean, I don't think you would come up a restaurant, but-
I was just thinking, having done sports and it being really hot in summer sometimes in the early breakfast is nice. So I just probably don't think that's actually a good idea.
But right, for noise ordinance purposes, but sports activity or recreation activity might be too loud. But 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM seems appropriate? Because it's within our noise break time?
I think, yeah, I think seven is reasonable. I think, I mean, I don't anticipate, but it would be like a big noisy thing at 6:00 in the morning, but I think seven would, seven is super reasonable.
And say, it is also worth noting that we could, I mean, in theory, right, a team could show up at 6:00 AM as long as they're, you know, it's past dawn and they're adhering to the noise ordinance. But the city maybe just won't reserve it for the, like, we won't give them the permit that says only you could use the field at 6:00 AM.
Yeah, it wouldn't be there until, yeah. I do like that change, though, to have a time limit. So if that, there's consensus on that.
I had some other questions on the reservation form. I've seen, I looked at quite a few other cities that had much bigger facilities. And a lot of them included a secondary emergency contact, which I thought was probably useful in some situations. And it would just be like a one-line thing, name and number of a secondary contact if for some reason something got trashed or something, you know, needed to be canceled because of weather or something like that. It'd be, and you could get hold of the-
The authority, you know?
Yeah, and I agree, like, I was noticing, like, the home phone line, I think is, will be a 2025 DQ.
Wow.
Still have a contact phone number in that secondary?
Yeah.
I would say change one of those to just phone number and then-
Yeah, primary contact, secondary contact.
Yeah. You'd probably want a phone number and an email.
Yeah.
And then I didn't know if you wanted to list on the terms and conditions of reservation, the insurance requirement, because it seems sort of like an important one to put on there.
That probably would be. It's also tricky, though, like, I don't think we would have the, the, this is our general, like, city park facility reservation form. So anybody, you know, reserving a covered area for one afternoon is also using the same form. And really, that insurance requirement is for organized teams that are gonna be using it all the time set summer. So I could put something on here.
So maybe in the official use only, have a sign-off of it?
Like, insurance required, yes or no?
Yeah, just so it's a reminder that it's checked on.
Yeah, and then COI provided, yes or no? That's an added check just for office to make sure it's looked at and like we have on the file and all. Does that work for you, Josh?
Yeah, I think both of those will work.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, is that a check? Somebody said anyone was about to ask, I'd like to provide insurance, so. Want to just leave it here?
You could always just do regulations, insurance may be required.
Yeah.
Well, because this says all applicant organizations must admit certificate of general liability, but there would be instances where we would want insurance outside of the organization.
Well, and I think it's, the person reading this may not be the person who wrote this out. So I think to have that on both.
Well, yeah, and this is athletic field rules, but if you were to add it to the actual application, it would be helpful for instances like that.
That's all I have.
My request to change is very superficial. On the application, if it's gonna be edited and re-formatted on the park rules and regulations, can we take the bullet point off the first paragraph under heading?
Just getting rid of the purpose of it, basically?
Yeah, because it's not a bullet.
It's not a bullet. It's like a preamble.
Oh, still want the line there?
Yes, just-
But it's just off the bullet?
Just tip off the bullet point.
Yes, I can do that. I mean, I could get rid of the line too, but-
I wasn't going to ask unless there was any other edits to this document. But if you're already in there, I can give you that. Other questions, comments, or concerns with the ball field policy? There's been a couple of proposed changes and amendments. Does everyone feel comfortable making or adding on anyone? Feel comfortable making a motion and just saying as in what?
One, sorry, one last clarification.
How's that, Thompson?
The bullet point about trash, that just, you put the trash in the trash can, but then it says trash may not be left at the facility. So do you put it in the trash can or do you take it with you?
So typically, our park hopes doesn't do the trash cans. I don't think it's a big deal that he continues to do that.
Okay, so that, this, that last sentence makes it sound like I do too, like-
But if it's an excessive amount or they have extra bags, where, like, if you have a birthday party and you have a whole bag, you know, outside of what you can put in the trash can, please don't leave.
Trash may not be left at the facility outside the trap at the park or something.
Yeah.
That's all. I guess the question was, does anyone feel like this is too many changes for the technical passing of general amendment? Just checking. Any other questions or discussion? Do you have a motion coming up?
I move to approve the proposed athletic field use policy and changes to the park reservation form as drafted here with amendments made. As discussed. Sorry.
Okay. I have a motion in a second to thirdly propose athletic field use policy and change the park reservation form as drafted with amendments as discussed here. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Please signify by saying no. We will move on to resolution twenty twenty five dash oh three, advertising one month business licenses. So this was another thing we had discussion on previously. It was to give the option for a short term business license rather than um, a full year or the six month. So the exhibits are the business license ordinance and then the resolution just adding that in to the P and charges schedule with that to jump to. So repeal everything else and that's just.
I have one question on just repealing the P schedule. Um, section, if you look at the ordinance in section six, it does say in there, all business license licenses under this ordinance are annual and shall expire due thirty. So that kind of excludes the, what we're adding, do we need to add something in that section or would it be?
Just now I, I mark back to, the resolution is for the P schedule that we have changed and adopted. What we need to do is to change the ordinance, but that's a whole different procedure. So again, a step procedure, so if we were to adopt this resolution tonight, it would update the P schedule suspected using, as we intend to hope. Um, but I also ask even if we're bringing the business license ordinance for a next section because a lot of it has updated language, but that is the only thing that I saw that is like very counter um, to what I've spent, yeah, so. Um, but that would be a kind of per, per title to put that in this and then go back to that. Does that make sense?
Can we talk about a six month also?
I know that topic, so there is, yeah, there is. Any questions, comments, concerns? Here, do I have a question?
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash oh three, updating the city's fee and charges schedule.
Second, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting resolution twenty twenty five dash oh three, updating this fee and charges schedule? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Now we have resolution twenty twenty five dash oh four sewer fund contingency transfer. I will let our city administrator take this whole thing.
Um, so during this fiscal year, City of Amity Waste Water Treatment Plant has experienced a few unanticipated repair needs. We have a, uh, well, we actually have had issues with both of our blowers, putting air issue into the wastewater lagoons. Um, that was the smell over the summer. Uh, we brought one of them back online just for it to have further trouble. Um, we're working on getting the second one online, we're very close. And they, Public Works got the motor replaced recently.
Is that why it's funny again?
That is why it's funny, because they're both down right now, um.
Is it for air smell or is that free house?
That's, that's just like a very sewage.
Yeah.
Um. And just put in the oven, so it may be, there's a lot.
It's just like a really, I, I mean, I noticed smell burning, like, stuff, but this was like a really specific burn here. Smell that I noticed outside a few times and I was like, what is going on?
Um, in addition to that, so, so that blower took a, a larger chunk of making its funds originally. Now we know it needs just a little bit more, I could pull a little more to help it more. Um, we also, the Public Works Office's H bank system is broken, basically died. Now it's twenty five years old to this point, so it is time, but, um, it's unfortunate timing. And that is, we have to put on that another twelve thousand dollars. So, um, to cover these, you know, unexpected costs and then any other repairs that pop up as we come to the end of our discharge season, um, I'm requesting a transfer of forty thousand dollars of contingency to the materials and services appropriation within the sewer fund.
A question on transfer appropriations, so I'm not familiar, but there's the, like, threshold of ten percent, and in fact, it's ten percent of the total fund, right?
So. There's. I, I just went through a local budget law training.
Yeah.
And I learned about all the different, different thresholds. So what we're looking at here is the transfer, because we have contingency that we can move, council can transfer via resolution up to fifteen percent of the total fund. So of the sewer fund expenditures, including capital, that sort of, um, that, you know, that total appropriation right there, that's seven hundred and seventy eight thousand, up to fifteen percent of that transferred via resolution within a fiscal year.
Within one month.
Within one month, yes.
Okay.
Um, now if you're increasing or decreasing the total appropriations of a fund, that's when you have to do a supplemental budget, uh, which is a little bit more of a process. And then if it's more than ten percent, either it increased or it decreased more than ten percent, you have to have a public hearing associated with that supplemental budget. We will probably be cutting this one of those too, because the mixing gun study, um, and a few, and we got an S C A grant that we're hoping to start, um, expending funds on. Um, there's a few of those that, in order to expend those funds, we need to amend the budget with further appropriations.
Um, thank you. I wasn't questioning the need, I knew we were good and we're doing, you know, you brought it forward immediately. I just couldn't remember how it works.
There would be, yeah, there.
There's a lot.
Too many thresholds and slightly different processes for all of them, but it's, it's, yeah.
Thank you for staying updated, so we can just look at this resolution and know that, um.
Between Natasha and myself, I think we are, Natasha catches me a lot, so we're good.
Um, and council is still implying a simple resolution will do this, but is there questions? Concerns, so I would. Um. Well, I would say, three years ago, we had a T P and we were borrowing back before Christine Hodder and Sewer. And so I'm really thankful for our council's past decisions to face to a point where everything, something who was astray or anything, finding, you know, savings and outwards, seizing help. Um. Yeah. If there is something, I'm just asking for a motion.
We will approve, excuse me, resolution twenty twenty five dash oh four, a resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriated funds from contingency to materials and services within the fiscal year of twenty twenty four, twenty five sewer fund budget.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash oh four, a resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriated funds from contingency to materials and services within the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five sewer fund budget. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Next, we have an update to our check signups. So, um, our current list of check signers in our first federal is outdated. Store free check centers list includes city administrator, city recorder, treasurer, mayor, council president, and committee chairperson. Um, our current list of signers needs to be updated. And the current center list on the safety deposit box page is outdated as well. It usually has three signers, the city administrator, treasurer, recorder, and the mayor. Um, why is that up? It's not the front. Okay, so we don't need that now on the city. Okay.
I think it was only prior comments of, I think, we're good, we're good on that.
Um, so it would just be, um, an authorization to update to have council president, coordinator, who is also the finance committee chairperson added to, uh, added as a signatory on the person.
But what should do that, it's all involved.
No?
Okay, because we need all the, that's everything we did. I move to update the list of authorized check signers on the city of Amity's first federal checking account to include Mayor Japine, council president slash finance committee chair, Melissa Horcas, city administrator, making part, and city recorder slash treasurer, Natasha Johnson, contingent on passing the bank's credit check and remove any and all others.
So.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to update the list of authorized check signers on the city of Amity's first federal checking account to include Mayor Japine, council president, finance committee chair, Melissa Horcas, city administrator, making part, and city recorder, treasurer, Natasha Johnson, contingent on the passing the bank's credit check and remove any and all others. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Next, we have a historic collections management policy brought to us by the living heart person in the street.
Um, so this is just to kind of lay the groundwork. The, the Amity Historic Landmarks Committee expressed interest in digitizing and collecting historic city and community documents, photos, um, generally limited to document photos. Um, basically just things that are, that could be significant to the community, um, or, or could provide value in, in recognizing that source of content. Um, as a first step into kind of variety based outline for, for that activity, now I drafted a collections manager's policy with the help of a, a mentor from the Morgan Parks and Rec Department. Um, they, they assign a mentor, um, for the, for the historic resources essential. Um, and I've been working with them to put together this policy. And it just kind of guides the city's approach to having a collection, what should or shouldn't be included, what we can realistically handle, um, and how we handle disagreements for other needs. Right now, there is no collection, so this is really just the first step to kind of setting our efforts up for success. Basically, it allows staff to say no to Alan Ashen when he volunteers to bring a cannon to the city for our keeping. Um, and we can say, I'm sorry, that's cool, but.
We don't have the space on.
We can't, we can't take it, so.
Thanks for your work on this.
Yes.
It's an extensive.
It was, so the mentor pointed me in the right direction, uh, a really good direction. There's a website, it basically answered a bunch of questions, and then it generated this form. And then I think I better do, but.
Um, so I have a question in general, so you bring this to council for approval, approve or don't approve the policy. Within it, it's written, it reads that it can be updated by the historical landmarks committee. Um, and I didn't make no aware, that just seemed to be my impression. So I'm wondering if that's how it would be, or if they would bring recommendations for changes to the policies you council for approval.
My thought was, my thinking was that if we needed to change the policy, could we bring recommendations to council for those changes? Um, I may have, I, I think it's section F in the first.
Did I read it wrong?
No, no, um, no, it's very, I, I think, like I said, I was answering questions.
Yeah.
Um, and not all of it translated exactly that I thought. Um, so this does say the policy shall be reviewed by the historical landmarks committee. The policy will be reviewed, so it just says it's reviewed, um.
Well, our internal policy is that a committee would make recommendations to council, so even though it's not specified.
Yes, I certainly could specify, and honestly, for detail sake, I probably should.
I was gonna say, it's so detailed, we could just add that.
I'll go add that line, like, this is how you actually make decisions when you review, right? That way, the historical landmarks committee, six years from now, says, hey, like, this is my work before, it's not moving.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that was my, not procedurally, but just, yeah, that this is a lot of stuff and should this document ever get to be used? Yeah, that there is a process to update it as I, as I break it in.
Because we all know unique situations will continue to come up.
You caught a cannon, it was weird, just weird.
Just something else is lurking. I had a question just about documents, do, with all the old maps that are back there, will those get cataloged?
Personally, I would love for them to, to be so, but the, kind of in that process, right? Um, we've been looking at, you know, the, the ordinances and minutes from, you know, nineteen hundreds. We've been looking at old maps, we've been looking at, uh, some, we have some photos in the back, right? There, there's a lot of files and resources here and, and we're trying to figure out the best way to either scan them in or, or to get them into an online kind of format that people can actually reference in the city, yeah.
And they'll all have a unique cataloguing number.
That, that's the hope, that's the hope, that's the, uh, this is, this policy is definitely the ultimate ideal.
Yeah, true. And it's, it's aspirational, but I think like long term, it's obtainable and it's the damn framework that we're working towards of, when I think of all the boxes of documents that we've gone through and assessed. Uh, thank you for bringing this forward and great work. Is there any questions? I would ask for a question.
I move to approve the proposed historic collections management policy.
I'm second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the historic collection management policy, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Um, our next item is a proposed contract for D R C, direct responsible charge. If you can give an overview of what that is, why we need it, and what your.
Any trouble? Feel free to break in if you have questions. So basically, the wastewater and, and water treatment, both of the cities, both of the city's treatment plants require an operator to be present with a, well, require an operator to, uh, provide oversight to those processes. Uh, and they have to have a certain level of credential, right? Um, in the city of Amity's case, both the wastewater treatment and the water treatment plant require level two certifications. Uh, our Public Works Superintendent Greg currently has level one. Um, treatment certifications on both the wastewater side and the water side. Uh, and so he is working towards the level two, but we don't count him yet. Uh, the D R C essentially is a signatory, somebody that kind of watches over the process, uh, reviews sample results, reviews, um, procedures with, with staff, uh, and just. sample results, reviews procedures with staff, and just kind of makes sure that the city is running those plants in the correct way, and that we're keeping up to date on requirements from OHA or DEQ, and continuing to provide the required level of expertise of those plants. Currently, we have a contract with someone, Daryl Walker, for DRC services. He did let us know that his prices are going up this summer, due to insurance reasons. He's also, he's let me know in the past that he's looking to get out of the game, particularly on the wastewater side. Just doesn't, he's not as strong on the wastewater side. And so I recently approached, or approached, and I reached out to, a couple of options for DRC services, specifically with experiencing wastewater treatment, because the city's been having issues with DEQ violations, right, and making sure that the wastewater treatment plant is running as well as it could. I found a small group that just started a DRC company, business essentially, and they, both of the founders offer a Level 4 certification on the wastewater side, they're very experienced with wastewater. One of their members is Seth Mo, Seth, and he works for the City of Malala, has been doing great work there. The other is Chad Snyder, who is Lafayette's public courts director, just left Lafayette to take another job, and I think up in, up in the port, one of the ports up in the canyon, or up in, along the Columbia River. Anyway, they both very experienced with wastewater, I think they provide good oversight, they commit, with this contract, they commit to regular check-ins at the wastewater treatment plant, and that's not something that we currently get with our DRC services. And so I think that would help us really kind of push forward, right? They don't necessarily enforce a certain way of running the treatment plant, but they provide best recommendations, they make sure that myself and Greg are informed on the way, what we should be doing, and those kinds of things.
Can I ask what we're currently paying monthly?
So we currently pay seven hundred and fifty for water and five hundred for sewer, is how Daryl works it out. He recently told us that he would be increasing that to fifteen hundred total. He didn't update the broker downmounts, but he told us that it would be going up to fifteen hundred total because of insurance.
Which is a lot of liquid more.
So this is a pretty big price jump.
To add this contract, for the time being, yes, we essentially will remove the five hundred dollars from Daryl and add in nine hundred dollars for all that flows each month. Long-term, all that flows is working on getting their water certifications up a little higher. Right now, they have a water Level 2, but our treatment plant requires a water Level 2 and a filtration endorsement. If they don't have the filtration endorsement, they're testing the spring for their water Level 3, which would cover us. So, long-term, they've offered to cover the city entirely for eleven hundred. But...
But Greg should be working towards getting certified too.
Should. So, yeah, so really, long-term, we're hoping to have that announced.
Do I miss words or things?
Is that like a set first, if you want to...
It's not.
Right in the...
So section three, payment on their contract portion.
Oh, right, I see. Okay, yeah, basic services are...
They do, yes, they do also have, right, if we, if we need additional, you know...
So this is above...
It's above and beyond the, like, monthly visit, and then a couple hours for a week, potentially.
So the contract is what they're bound to with us, but when you look at the rates and services, it says one thousand to three thousand just for signature. And so, I mean, yeah.
Oh, that's what you were going off on.
Yeah. So we are getting a deal there, and I, to my knowledge, the contractual agreement for two hours of work with, you know, in the city of the quarter city is more than... It doesn't take two hours to sign a newspaper, and I think that might have been the majority of what was happening. I'm not there.
What do you want?
That Daryl, what we've been paying for is to sign a paper. Yes. And so commitment to spend a certain amount of time. I have no doubt that Daryl has been able to provide that oversight, and we live, and I'm just saying that I think this is more of a commitment, I'm saying we won't take this much time in to it.
I told you this, didn't I?
Yeah.
Oh, so you're just the manager.
Yeah, I was thinking of the late schedule, and I was like, wow, this is pretty wide ening.
And it, I mean, it could be more, especially if we, you know, call them out for additional things, or have them know, help, right, with spreadsheets. I think there are a number of things that we might ask them for help with to get us up to compliance with DEQ, but that wouldn't necessarily be my cost, like. I think there are, just after talking with them, I, we identified several things where they're like, oh, yeah, we can help, you know, make it really easy for your staff with this, right? The, the, pretty well versed in that kind of thing.
Another thing to look out for is they do charge a hundred dollars per hour drive time off of the tour. So it's two hundred dollars to get back here.
No. That is unfortunately pretty difficult. Anytime we called Daryl, it was a five hundred dollar charge, at least, if he, well, if he came out. Phone calls were free, right? But if he had to come out to look at something, or come out to help us with something, it was five hundred dollars for the day, if he ended up having a stable night, or anything like that, we got that bill as well.
But in description of services, it says that includes weekly check-in with onsite staff. That means a phone, oh, okay. In-person check-in at least once a month, so does that mean it will be a two hundred dollar charge once a month? Or is that included in the services?
I think all of that is included within the services. It would be...
Additional call-out.
Yes. If we say, okay, we need you onsite right now, right, like, and they have to, you know, leave wherever they are on their drive to us, then that's what...
I would just say, like, as invoices start coming in, if it's nine hundred dollars plus two hundred, what is charged, and just ask, like, isn't that included in the...
We will serve, yes.
...description.
Yeah, but I guess I just worry that, yeah, like, it's just, you know, looking at the prices, the rates, I'm just like, oh, it would be surprise.
And so this becomes strictly the tax super funds, right? And we have it appropriated, is it aligned, have it through? Do you have these contracts, contract services? Is that only one and a half or at least part of them? And they have the... Oh, they take that. So it's probably a four hundred dollar a month increase, is that going to, it's the total budget?
If they all make good progress.
Yeah. Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the contract for DRC services through all that flows LLC as proposed.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the contract for DRC services through all that flows LLC as proposed. Any further discussion?
Will you make any comments on the infrastructure? Nothing?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes.
I would like to take a minute and a half to discuss. Don't worry, I have a sitter. Thank you. We will resume our meeting at nine oh six, and we will move on to agenda item J, ODOT right-wing offer packets. This is something that came before comes up previously with a question about donating property versus selling property. And so with that decision to ask for a market offer, this is the acquisition offer letter packet we just sent. Ethan, do you want to give that further everything before us?
We essentially covered it. This is just for ODOT's upcoming ADA program project, but in the city of Amity, ODOT reached out to acquire, either right-of-way or temporary refreshments in some locations, both. And they funded three offer packets, one for each location of needed right-of-way. Through one of those locations, they offer a thousand dollars, the other two locations, they offer seven hundred and fifty dollars. So they're just small spots that they need access to for, for the vague different projects.
Did each one of those specials have a permanent edutector, right? I read that.
Trying to find it.
And...
Yeah, the contracts were...
They do, in the first packet we got, it had actual photographs where they had painted it, and these are all... I have no questions. I don't know if it was loaded at the last meeting, but Ethan has additionally followed up again, just on that potential conflict with El Toro. And to the best of the ODOT representatives' knowledge, everything will be done in a whole week, right, and goes to the...
Question.
The contract, I'm sorry, the contract with the contract, it will be... So I feel like that's really all we can do from our perspective, because they need that to very easily, that that's remains as a new work. Was there any questions, Ethan?
More than a hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
Any more?
I think it's... All to my head, sure. Are you, oh, okay. There you go. So we don't need to approve that separately, or are you okay?
Don't.
I don't think there's a need to, unless we want to call some change in position attractions or areas of concern, I think there's a... Motion, either of those will appear for me.
I move to accept ODOT's right-of-way acquisition offer and authorize the city administrator to execute the transaction, pending exit of AD and C.
Still here.
I have a motion to accept ODOT's right-wing acquisition offer and authorize the city administrator to execute the transaction, pending exit of AD and C. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no.
Next, we have a new counselor application. We all received that in the packet, and...
Who's with this one?
I've got that. Okay, I got the two of us, all right.
Mr. Walker, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
There, Chad Smith. Good evening. I'm Michael Blanco, and I'm on the end of your guys, for you to go.
So, yeah. Thank you for your application. You have had a vacant position for quite a long time now, over a year, and so from here, council can move to approve your application or not, and if so approved, you would be sworn in next month.
Okay. Questions? What can I tell them? What do you like to hear?
Any questions we have to?
While you're thinking questions, want to give you some basics?
Sure.
Okay. Moved to Amity, nineteen ninety-nine, so I've been here a while. Raised my family here, I love Amity. Yes, man?
About nineteen ninety-nine.
Ninety-eight, was it? Ninety-eight?
No, that's when mine was born.
Yeah. We were having a new house there.
Yeah, but we lived here before that.
Women are already history on dates.
Oh, your application says many years, so we will take that as many years.
I'm going with that, I'm saying they gave me straight I'my sports. Been here a long time, raised my family here, worked in Linfield for nearly twenty years, went into the IT department there as a first-level technician, and just worked my way up to being the chief technology officer for Linfield, which was my last position there before retiring. And I love Amity. I've been running for large cities since my youth. I was more raised on the south side of Chicago, and I've been looking for the right-sized town ever since, and I find a town. So what I see here, I'd like to preserve, I'd like to help preserve. I see storms coming from our current world environments, and I'd like to help Amity weather any way I can. So whatever my talents might be, range of things, I've been field, as chief technology officer, I was on all sorts of committees, budget committees, building committees, parent-teacher committees, faculty committees, all sorts of things. So I feel that I am fairly good at working with people, listening to other perspectives, and finding common ground. Although I see that a lot of what you folks seem to do is maneuver the legalities of city-state and so larger issues. So that's always a tricky area. I know, we didn't any of the same things ourselves.
Yes, so as a council, we are the policymaking body, so every bit of policy that's instituted comes through us. Another major thing is we're, obviously, you know, all volunteers, and so Amity really is all hands on deck, and so a lot of this, as you sit here, it seems like it's coming, we're saying yes, we're coming and saying yes, but on the back end, we have our work sessions where we work through those, and, yeah, and anything else that comes up.
Understood. Because the unknowns are always the ones that get us on our toes, and they can be the trickiest ones to work through.
Are there any questions from you?
Do I have a motion?
Motion to appoint Michael Blanco as city council. Is there a position for him?
Do you have a position number?
I don't remember.
Okay, it might be to the vacant position.
The vacant position, I have to go to prison forever.
Why, maybe? Okay. We have a motion and a second to appoint Michael Blanco to the vacant council position. Any further discussion?
Welcome, thank you.
All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. So appointed, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being willing. Occasionally, we have a long night, it's a very insightful, very informative, I've been on council just over four years now, and... Um, I've been on council just over four years now, and the amount of information that I didn't know, that I didn't know, is amazing. So, um.
Always can be, always can be.
So we're very glad that you'll be bringing all that knowledge and experience of different things and glad that you're open to listening, learning, and taking work.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So we'll see you next month then, and we'll do a square in.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
In the meantime, staff will be in touch.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because we'll all make tries to do an agenda packet or something for next month.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I don't have the agenda items that were added, but if you look, there was a couple. There was one that is the appointment of an AMDA committee member and to accept the resignation of an AMDA committee member. So, um. I didn't put it out.
There's an application that I have.
And the resignation, but not the application.
Okay.
It was emailed today.
Yes.
No, I, I could put it. Um, so do you want to?
Stephanie Craig held a voting position on our AMDA committee. She has a lot of other commitments going on in her life and isn't able to, um, be as present as she was last year, so she felt that she needed to step back from that voting position role in the committee. Um, and she's going to continue to be involved as a justice equal. But because she was appointed to a voting member position, we needed an official resignation, so I would ask permission to, um, accept that resignation. At the same time before us, we have an application for someone who's interested, um, in the position. And so I don't have that in front of me. Um, I will say it's our city administrator's wife. She's not a resident of Amity, but she is very enthusiastic, um, about being a volunteer. She's committed to helping AMDA forward, so I would recommend that we accept the resignation and also accept having an application. We will then stay at four out of five voting members, so we'll still be recruiting the fifth voting member of AMDA and trying to ramp up recruitment just to get more membership, even non-voting members, just volunteers, people that wanna get involved. Uh, so that is my official recommendation to council, is to accept the resignation and application for appointment. Um. Are there any questions or concerns?
Can we do it all in one motion?
Yes.
Is it, if you want it, if you're comfortable?
Yes.
I move that we accept the resignation letter, um, Stephanie Craig and Amy. At the same time, approve the application of Helen Heather Burke to the AMDA committee.
Stephanie? Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the resignation from Stephanie Craig while at the same time approving the appointment of Heather Burke to the AMDA committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Um, Mrs. Park did ask if she should be present. I told her that she didn't need to, but.
She is on to, if you have any questions for her.
Continue and see, welcome. Uh, thank you.
I think it's with Nathan, but.
Oh, well.
I mean, that's not me, so.
Oh, yeah. Tricky. Um, okay, we'll move on to department reports. You have a city administrator report in front of us. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, not particularly. Oh, um, there was just highlighting an SCA paving project about to bid. We're excited about that. Um, I did the Gaucho Street waterline project, it was largely completed. We're now focused on the change orders for repaving Gaucho and Nursery Street. Um, I've, you know, worked through the grant budgets and reconciled, and I'm pretty sure we don't have any left, so we're officially, officially done. I'm not gonna bring more waterlines to you for, for further approval. The, the gift that keeps on giving, I think it's run out. Um, the, the trail project in Amity City Park, very excited about that. Um, it's, the, the trail's been completed. We placed four new picnic tables under the shelter, four benches along the path. I think they look a little good. Uh, we've also talked about, uh, just for your reference, putting in a boulder on the side closer to Fifth Street. Um, so that when we drive cars back there for the car show, we don't drive that way. Because if you come from that way, you're gonna end up driving along the rails of the trail. And the trail's pretty sturdy. If you, if you're perpendicular to it, it'll be fine, um, but if you drive lengthwise along it, it tends to slow down. So we were probably gonna have that boulder. I, I will confirm, but I think there's also a little bit more funding left in that grant if we want to do something like additional plantings along the trail or additional, additional features, something small, quick, that we can kind of put together and get in there, but I am hoping to close that one out in the next couple of months, so.
Very good time to think of.
So, um, we'll, we'll be looking into that. Um, the, the other thing for council to be aware of and to know, um, we did have an issue where with a property owner recently, um, their sewer was backing up. They had somebody come out and snake their, their cleanup or their sewer lateral from their property, um, to the main. They ended up getting the, the sewer snake caught in roots within the city's main. And they, they ended up being in the city's main line. We had Orvack come out, clean out the roots. It's taken care of now, but because the, the issues for that property owner, um, ended up being as part of the main, and they had to call out the plumber a couple of times because of getting caught in those roots. And the city split the cost with that property owner for that problem, so. That is the, I think that's the only other thing. Still a lot's going on. Uh, we're still working on the water treatment plan. Hoping, hoping it's sooner than later, but we shall see, so. Any other questions for me? Any, anything I, probably lots of things I missed, so.
On, on Gaucho, I just had somebody ask, we've noticed that there's fresh spray painted markings on Gaucho. What's, what's that all about?
Um, I, honestly, I'm not entirely sure.
So today, they did the soft cutting around the sewer, um, holes, and that's, so that's like the first step in parking.
And that was the city's.
A lot of drivers.
That was the paint, but today they actually soft cut the.
And it wasn't, yeah, they soft cut the drivers.
And that was the city's non-tractor out there? Cause I, I did one of those when they were coming out. I received a call today that somebody saw cut through a five-iron decline. Uh, so, I texted our contractor when I received that call. I haven't had, I haven't gotten an answer yet. I'm wondering if it's because he's dealing with that, but.
Uh, I assume it was, and I also saw public work scope in Amity City a couple of times, so.
Okay.
They wouldn't.
They wouldn't, yep. Okay.
I think I got my first text at like nine thirty this morning. Why are you cutting the road?
Yeah, if they're cutting through stuff like that, it's, they're, they're hoping to pave relatively soon, as soon as the weather dries up.
So that could be.
I think potentially, there's supposed to be some good weather next month, so.
Oh, so like within the next couple of weeks, if we don't.
It could be. We allow them to, to essentially look for a paving window anytime after March fifteenth, so.
Okay. I just wanna highlight one thing from the administrator's report, um, I started thinking when being met with DEQ, just to talk about what's ahead, because we had those violations come forward. Um, we went through the appeal process, and that was more to just like explain from our side. We think this is why this happened, and I think this is why our members were off. I think it's been mentioned here before. A lot of that had to do with staff transition and like the moving of decimal point and few cases and whatnot. Um, I just wanna say that I was really impressed with the agency's willingness to work with us. Um, there is the supplemental, supplementary environmental project where eighty percent of what they have find you can go towards a project that helps you be more in compliance. Um, only because we're a very small city, where they let that project be towards our compliance issues versus just, um, like clean water or re-adoption type thing. Um, and then something else that you mentioned in here is this, uh, mutual agreement order. That is a, um, option for a contract that you go into and essentially you agree to a timeline to say, within this timeline, I'm gonna do these specific things to get into compliance. Uh, there's pros and cons there, but the pro side is that they, they abstain from giving you violations during that time because you have a timeframe to meet compliance. Also, at that same meeting, we, um, I don't know how many of you guys remember, but the, um, N D E P S, is that?
N P B S, yeah.
Okay, yeah, mixed up letters. Um, the permitting, that is going to be reissued, so our permits for all the levels that we're allowed to have, quarrying, um, you know, EODs and that, got reissued with new standards, um, for Amity, and they did, or they will, depending on officially, we will have those allowances that we didn't have before. If you're a hallback, when we got police water, so these treatment plans, um, that was a potential, and it was something we need to worry about, something, and it was something we need to think about, what it is here. Nothing has been significantly done to their system. Um, and so we're at a place where with the new permitting, even as we move forward, it's going to be very hard to be in compliance. Um, and so I will leave the next steps to staff, and I know it will come back to council, depending on, you know, which way we go with either or both of these things. Um, but my takeaway, though, is that we do have options. They are holding us to standards, but they're being supportive about it and, um, trying to help us make a plan to get to where we need to be, recognizing we don't have the facilities or the funds to get there immediately. Um, so I just drag that out, re-saying the things we know, to keep it far in mind that like, it's not something we can forget about. We will have to move forward with significant improvements, um, in various ways, just to keep our treatment plan to work in the city. And that's not because of any changes that have happened in Amity, that's not because of the recent things that broke. It's just because regulations are heightened and our infrastructure is old, so everything kind of hit at us. Um, so I was having DEQ also thankful for staff. Um, Nathan was there, Gray was there, Kellor was there as well. And like everyone's trying to work together, so thank you. I was thinking, I'm for that.
No, thank you. That was a big one. The, uh, the, for your reference, the permit has been issued and goes into effect April first with the new release.
Um, anything else?
Don't think so.
Any question for our city administrator? Tasha, do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Um.
Captain, I have a hard time reading this.
Yeah, I do.
Handwriting, and so I just wanted to quickly follow up on one of these complaints was that it was about the RV, and it was checked on spoke property on Tuesday, totally, oh, that's not right.
Not this one? I mean.
The one that was online? The back, you know?
Is it? Um, yes. So, um, it was the date of two twenty-one twenty-five. Two copies for the permit on trailer and residence, no something, or no contract with Willam, but do they have a permit, a temporary camping permit for that RV?
They do not.
Okay.
Um, no, they, they do, they just got one.
Oh, all right.
This is true. I, I think I have them all here.
Okay, okay.
They came in, filled out the paperwork. I went through the ordinance with them and said, these are the exact requirements that you have to meet for in order to continue to have this permit. Yeah, and so, and I.
So, okay, so that is the follow-up, that they, there was two copies of the permit that was issued. So that's a temporary camping permit. How long is that?
Um, so that goes for six months. And I explained that the ordinance allows, it does allow me to extend it out to that point, but only if the, the prop, well, the, another property owner, the person living in the trailer has to show evidence that they're looking for, for housing. Um, and if they show evidence for applying for housing, looking for opportunities, then in theory, I'm supposed to extend it for another, I think another six months.
Okay. Um, well, I'm glad to hear that now it's permitted as it should be, and then also, um, they seem to learn, like, just what they needed to do to stay in compliance with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, good, I just know that this is not the first time there's been a complaint, and so moving into compliance about many processes is a step in the right direction, but I would just appreciate if there's continuing oversight, just to make sure as long as possible for everyone.
Yeah, I, I made it clear that if, if any of those kind of come back with complaints or whatever, that could be verified by the sheriff, especially the sheriff deputies. Um, that, you know, they're not meeting any of these requirements that, that they wouldn't be allowed to live there, so.
Sounds good. Um, so we have public works report library for city engineer, building report, city attorney, planning report, protocol. Any questions there? Everything looked, uh, okay. Um, any other questions for department reports? Will you move on to business部门 and city councillors? Um, comments for the governor or council president or us?
Uh, the festival is in two weeks, so any day, well, it's the twenty-ninth, so it's right now, so just about two weeks, right?
Yes.
Um, any day of volunteers or of last one? We have another meeting coming up on the seventeenth, Monday the seventeenth, here at five thirty, and I'll need to join. But it's been room to volunteers meeting to the office or, or not, because it's not a city.
It's not a city.
Okay, great.
Um, councillor Shitz?
Hi, I'm Linda.
Councillor Toshie?
Nothing to add.
Councillor Wobham?
Nothing to add.
Councillor Luca?
Nothing to add.
How was your Zoom experience? Was it okay as far as listening and presentations?
Audience was pretty clear. The pixelation on the camera's kind of crazy, but that might be just on my end as well.
Okay. Um, well, thank you, and just remember to let us know. I struggle with remembering that there is a whole set of people on here. Sometimes I apologize, it's not personal, it's just the amount of bandwidth I have running a meeting. So thank you for your patience, and please speak up for yourself, um, if you need to.
Will do.
Uh, okay. Mayor's report and final comments. Um, I don't have too much. I would say tomorrow, um, Representative Louisa Palmer and Senator Bruce Star will be here in the town hall. And people of their district, so that was something they were interested in, and as they're wanting to have it here, so I hope that we have um, some community turnout. That's always good. Um, so I'll be here. I want to thank councillor Rodriguez for her donation of paint in time. If you guys take a look at this nice hallway out here that has been updated. If you guys take a look at this nice hallway out here that has been updated.
We were doing it early in the summer.
Yes, and then the front room was also refreshed, so we'll be able to invite people in through there through the working door, um, and, and under space, so yay. Um, and then on twentieth of this month, uh, there was like a call-out invitation from the state water caucus for a day of water day in the capital. Um, so I'll be going there to learn about what's in the water, what they're trying to do um, on all different levels with Amity. My Amity lens is really always about infrastructure and getting support and help. This day won't specifically be about any projects. Um, but they do have legislation going forward from a survey that they did recently for water meetings. Um, and Nathan submitted some projects, the blocks that go into Young Shing with our extinction of the transmission line, right? That's what it ended up being, and the, um, so then we have a business organ money, funding some of that, like top of the list gaps that we do lose. So we have that project, uh, that is being moved forward by some specific Phil sponsors and water caucus, so, um, that's not what that day is going to be about, but it's obviously people that are working towards that. Um, so unless there's any objection, I'm moving to the nature for Amity and learning more about water. And then there was a question I will re-ask staff. A work session for this month, which will be coming up a week from today. We don't have an agenda yet or a pressing matter. Is there something the council would like to move forward as a work session? Or is that how uncomfortable it's skipping March work session? And then it's me being the eagle, captain. Any objections?
No objections, sir.
Okay, I think we've seen unanimous consensus. Okay. Um, any other questions, comments, anything for the board? Alright, this is the latest meeting yet of the year, but it's only March. Um, I will... I will adjourn the meeting.
Looking to...
Not yet, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. I will adjourn the meeting at nine thirty.